All right, so welcome, everybody. We're going to get started. I'm Andrew Berman, Executive Director of Village Preservation. And welcome to our City Council District Two Forum. First, a couple of quick words about village preservation. We are a community-based nonprofit founded in 1980, and our mission is to celebrate, document, and preserve the special architectural and cultural heritage of Greenwich Village, the East Village, and NoHo. If you like what we do, please support us. As I mentioned earlier, we have in the chat a link to our program calendar for the coming weeks. And I'm also now going to drop in the chat a link. If you want to join Village Preservation, we are a member-supported organization. So your contributions make everything that we do possible. So please consider supporting our work in that way. And that includes, as I've mentioned before, an upcoming, another City Council District Forum for District One, our Village Awards, an annual meeting on June 13th, and about seventy-five to eighty free and public lectures, walking tours, panel discussions throughout the year, as well as, of course, the work that we do around fighting for landmark protections, good zoning for our neighborhood, trying to ensure that new development in our neighborhood preserves the best of what's there, especially our history, and builds upon the character of our neighborhoods rather than destroying it. So let's talk about tonight's program. We, as some of you may know, we have an election coming up. It's going to be the primary for city council seats in New York City, and it's pretty much just city council seats. So it's probably going to be a low-turnout election, which means that every vote is going to make a very, very big difference. And the reason why we're having this off-year election is because every ten years, the city council is redistricted, and as a result of that redistricting, the lines are redrawn. So there's a new two-year term. So even though you just voted two years ago for mayor and borough president and comptroller and city council, it's only going to be city council on the ballot this year. And for City Council District Two, which is what we are talking about tonight, those boundary lines have changed somewhat. They now include all of the East Village, all of NoHo, Greenwich Village as far west as Sixth Avenue, and almost all of the east side of Manhattan between Fourteenth and Thirtieth Streets, First and Fifth Avenues. So that's a big and diverse district. And currently, in the Democratic primary, there are two registered candidates. One is the incumbent Carlina Rivera, and the other is Allison Ally Ryan, who's with us tonight. Councilmember Rivera, like Ally Ryan, was not only invited to participate, but was given the opportunity to schedule this around her availability, but she declined to participate as she did in our 2021 candidate forum. But we're very happy to have Ally with us here tonight, and we're looking forward to a good conversation with her about the issues affecting City Council District Two. So welcome, Ally. A couple of other just very quick words before we get started. We are a 501(c)(3), so that means that while we are able to hold forums like this and share information with the public about candidates, elected officials, policies, positions, we do not endorse, and we do not tell you who to vote for. We, by law, cannot do that. But we hope you will educate yourself and that this will be a good opportunity for you to do that. And we certainly want you to know that this year, the primary election is on June 27th of 2023, with early voting from June 7th to June 25th. There will be a general election in November on November 7th. We understand that there, while there was a registered Republican candidate, they may not any longer be on the ballot, but we're going to worry about the general election as we get closer to November. Right now, we're talking about the primary, and this is the one contested primary for the Democratic ballot line. So the format for this evening is I'm going to introduce Ally Ryan. She's going to have two minutes or so to introduce herself. I'm going to ask her a series of questions, which will also have some, you know, limits in terms of the time. She'll get a closing statement, and then we will open it to questions from everybody who's here. And the way to ask those questions is to drop them into the Q and A. I would recommend saving those for towards the end, because you never know, your question might be answered before you even get to ask it, if you're lucky. But you can drop those in there anytime. And if you do have any technical issues, you can also put those in the Q and A. We'll be monitoring that for any technical issue questions. So on with tonight's programs. So I'm going to introduce Ally Ryan, who is a candidate in the Democratic District Primary. Let me just, okay, unmuted you. And she was also a candidate in 2021 and is now running in the Democratic Primary. So Ally, I'm going to turn it over to you to give yourself a two-or-so-minute introduction, and welcome.
Thank you, Andrew, and thank you, Village Preservation, for hosting tonight's Council District Two Candidate Forum. I am not surprised that my opponent, Carlina Rivera, declined, since she has a track record of disregarding residents' input and improving land use plans that are designed to benefit multimillionaire developers and special interest groups. As you will see tonight by my answers, that I will continue to stand by my commitment to save small businesses and jobs, to stop pitting historic preservation against affordable housing, and to rebuild residents' trust in a strong elected official. It's no longer enough that a candidate supports small businesses. Who doesn't? Or promotes jobs? Everybody does. Carlina's bill, the Commercial Rent Stabilization Act, calls for the only rent increases for business owners, which can only result in higher prices and inflation. Whereas I have consistently advocated for the Small Business Jobs Survival Act, which enables businesses to negotiate their lease renewals. Carlina lied to the constituents about the Union Square Tech Hub by failing to negotiate promised South of Union Square protections. Whereas tonight, I am reaffirming my support for a South of Union Square landmarking effort. Carlina's negotiated approval of the SoHo-NoHo Rezoning and a bill designed to displace seniors from their homes reveals her betrayal of tenants. Whereas I advocate for 100% affordable housing such as Five World Trade. My track record shows that I have built relationships with residents, small businesses, and workers, and have stood with them on these issues. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ally. So my first question, which I'll also give you a sort of a maximum of two minutes, but don't feel as though you have to take two if you have a more succinct answer, is tell me what sort of work you have done or been involved with in support of historic preservation efforts?
Thank you, Andrew. So I would say over the... When I was growing up, I grew up in Richmond, Virginia, which is known for its historic architecture. And I studied art history in college, and I fell in love with historic architecture, just walking around New York City, as well as other cities, too. One of my favorite, when I visit a new city, I actually like going to the library to see, because for me, libraries show immediately how much a city values architecture. But bringing it forth to modern or to present day, over the past three years, I have gotten involved in land use issues. First, for me, it was to help save East River Park, and then it led to opposing the Governor's Island overdevelopment and the rezoning for that island. And that led me to collaborating with others to found the Citywide People's Land Use Alliance. That also included many grassroots groups of neighbors who came together, who fought rezonings in their neighborhoods. And in particular, for Lower Manhattan, that included the Bowery Alliance of Neighbors, the SoHo Alliance, the NoHo Neighborhood Association, and Broadway Residents. And with my background in art history, and I actually used to live in Greenwich Village for a little bit, I knew immediately it was important to stand against the SoHo-NoHo rezoning in terms of, like, for me, SoHo and NoHo represent living art history. But this is where artists have created artwork that is still on exhibit today, as well as recognizing that artists are still living in the lofts that are there. And so, so those are just a few examples of how I've gotten involved in historic preservation in Lower Manhattan.
Great. I'm going to ask you to tell us a little bit more about your background in terms of some of the things that you've been involved in that you think make you qualified to be a city council member or that just would inform what you would do as a city council member. And again, I'll ask you to, limited to about two minutes.
Okay, so I think number one, it's being able to listen and serve the community, like the residents who live there. In the last two years of the de Blasio administration, we all saw firsthand rezonings being pushed all around the city and groups of neighbors coming together to oppose those land use issues or those rezonings. And our city council members chose to be yes people for the mayor and to approve those rezonings. And so I, so to me, I think it's really important to, as a city council member, to listen and also to stand with the constituents. And I know that sounds very simple, but we've seen firsthand how hard that can be. And also, as I shared, that I value historic districts and also the character that makes a neighborhood a neighborhood and creates the community that people live in.
Great. Thank you. Let me ask you, maybe it's sort of a philosophical question, but what role do you think historic preservation should play in planning the future of our neighborhoods and our city?
That's a really good question, because I think over the past sixty years, the historic preservation movement, specifically in New York City, was created to save Grand Central Station and also for citizens reeling from the destruction of Penn Station. And it has, so it's been more about buildings. And whereas we have to remember that we need to, we need to put people before profit. And so it's how we move through our neighborhoods. And I think even in terms of, it's not just about affordable housing, but it's also about like the community center, the dog runs, the businesses that we like to visit. So I think, so for me, someone on Twitter, Leah Goodridge, who's a city planning commissioner, she actually wrote that most New Yorkers don't leave their neighborhoods. And I think that's, I agree with her. I mean, I do, but but there was a time, I can definitely say, when my children were younger, I didn't go above Fourteenth Street. And it was a joke, but it was real. And I, but I think for most part, like, everybody has their favorite coffee shop. They have their favorite dry cleaners. They have their grocery store that they go to. And they're like, but as small businesses are going out of business, we're having, like, before, and that was before COVID. It wasn't due to COVID. That people, COVID just submit, like, cemented people's buying, buying things online. But what I've been advocating for pre-COVID as well as since COVID is to shop local, to, like, to go to your local shoe store and buy shoes or to get your shoes repaired at the cobbler down the street.
You're anticipating, sure, that's great. You're anticipating one of my questions. So I'm going to sort of jump in here, because I do want to talk about small business a little bit more. But let me ask you this, and you alluded to this somewhat in your introductory comment. Some say that the way to address our city's affordability crisis in terms of housing is to allow developers to build as much housing as possible under the idea that more housing will mean reduced housing prices for everyone. This school of thought therefore also claims that things like landmarking and contextual zoning are inherently bad, that because they are inherently in conflict with affordability. What do you think about that, and how would you address affordability issues? And how do you think they intersect with and impact preservation issues?
Well, as you know, this is a very big hot topic. And, and I think, as we saw firsthand with the SoHo-NoHo rezoning, that in the negotiations that Carlina Rivera participated in, they couldn't find a lot to create affordable housing in SoHo and NoHo. They had to go to East Village. They had to go to Hudson Square. And we're in a, we're in a situation that you, you... Over the past three years, over 6,000 residential units have been approved by city council in Lower Manhattan, below Fourteenth Street. But Lower Manhattan has not increased in square footage. So they've been focused, so developers are focused on, let's build up. And everybody that I meet, that I've been meeting while campaigning is, like, they can't, like, the rents are high. There, people are struggling to make ends meet. So the idea of creating minor, like, buildings that are based on minority inclusionary housing that, like, eighty percent is market rate, twenty percent is affordable, isn't sustainable, because we're creating, especially in East Village, and I'm hearing this is also true in other neighborhoods as well, is that you're creating transient residents, residents who are only living here for a couple of years, because they're investing in their career, and then they're leaving to go elsewhere. And the idea of creating more housing, we're just creating more market-rate housing that people can afford. And so we can't, so we really, we need this. So I've been advocating for 100% affordable housing, such as, like, such as the Mitchell Lamas, such as NYCHA, such as PIPs Housing, that, because we don't need any more market-rate apartments, honestly. Not even, not just in Lower Manhattan, but all, like, all five boroughs. And so we need, so we need to think in terms of putting together, working with the state, working with the federal government, collaborating together to create housing that meets in people of middle income, of fixed income, of low income, to be able to stay here for the, so we're creating opportunities for residents to be long-term residents. And pitting that against historic preservation is, is a, I think of it as a false argument, because there'd be... Because a lot of the historic, like, historic tenement buildings are rent-controlled. They are, like, they have rent control. They offer rent-controlled apartments. They offer rent-stabilized apartments. The problem is, is that you have speculative investment investors trying to make a quick buck.
All right. Let me ask you two sort of follow-up questions in connection to that. So you mentioned creating 100% affordable, whether it's middle income or lower income or people on fixed incomes. In terms of the second council district, how would you go about looking for appropriate places to create that new 100% affordable housing? And how would you advocate for making that happen?
Well... I know Mark Levine has created a... He produced a report at the end of January highlighting 177. I don't want to say lots, but, because some of them have buildings on them. But he does, he found, created areas, and I think that might be a first place to look. Although I think, like, I personally think the Union Square Post Office that he designated as a potential site for affordable housing, I think it should stay. I mean, I know there are other liabilities and, or there are other things, issues to that, but I think that, like, it can, like, it's important to have a post office for people to go to. And there isn't another location in that area. And, but I think that's one place to look. I think also when developers are proposing new buildings, that that it's important to, to man, like, to say, like, you have to create affordable, like, 100% affordable housing and what that looks like, and just, I mean, sometimes you have to be the, like, envision, you have to, like, you know, you have to fight to do what's right. And in this case, it's, like, I've met people who live in NYCHA housing, and they're saving money to, to move their family out of NYCHA housing. But what they're, but where they're planning to move to is to Rockland County or New Jersey. And, and it makes me sad that, like, they can't afford to stay in their, like, the neighborhood that they may have, like, that one of the parents may have grown up in.
Yeah. You also alluded to something we often talk about, which is one of the connections between historic preservation and affordability, which is that oftentimes, some of the older buildings in our neighborhood that, that we advocate for preserving may well have rent-regulated affordable housing in it, longer-term residents, lower-income residents. So what would you do or seek to do to try to preserve and protect that housing stock and the buildings that they're located in?
Well, I'm glad you brought that, because I've been made aware that there are two buildings in East Village that the landlord is actually de, like, I'm not sure if this is the right word, but decommissioning the rent controller, the rent-stabilized apartments, and basically converting a rent controller, rent-stabilized building into a market-rate building. And I actually, I don't know how, I mean, I would like to learn more about how a landlord can find the, like, what are the loopholes and enable that, like, those things to happen? And to see if there's legislation that we can create to close those loopholes.
Got it. Okay. Shifting gears a little bit, although you did mention the East Village, which is what my next question is about. You know, the East Village is certainly one of the most historic neighborhoods in all of New York City, unlike some of its neighboring neighborhoods, though. Only a very small percentage of it is landmarked. And certainly, there's a lot of people who've worked to try to see that expanded. But they, including us, have encountered a lot of resistance from the city toward that end over the years. So I'm wondering what you would see yourself doing to try, as a city council member, if you were in that position, to try to see landmark protections expanded in the East Village, if that was something that you supported?
Well, you can tell me if I'm correct. Is, was the last time that a East Village, like, historic district created under Rosie Mendez?
Uh, well, the last historic district was in 2012. So yes, I do believe that was during Rosie's term.
Okay. So, so part of the reason why I'm asking is because, like, I'm curious of, like, how, like, I like to, I have read it, but I haven't read it recently, haven't read that landmarking recently. But I do, but I would like to read it again. But I think right, right now, the, I mean, I think it's really important to to preserve the historic, the historic buildings we have because of the history, but also because of the, because of many of the historic residential buildings in our neighborhood contain rent-controlled and rent-stabilized apartments. But, like, when I see what happened with SoHo-NoHo, there were six historic districts that were disregarded. And, and so, like, I may, would, like, I do, I do support South of Union Square being a historic district, and I would definitely be, would be interested to see what we can do for East Village. But we also have to look at, how do we strengthen historic districts in general? So if, like, in the future, if, if there's a rezoning, that the historic districts are not pushed to the wayside. I know, sort of not, but I think it's, I think it goes hand-in-hand, because you don't, like, you don't want to do something that's I don't want to do something that'll, to be put on paper to be like, oh, I did this, if it doesn't have longevity, like. I think it's important to do, like, if you're going to take on the initiative to create a historic district, you want to make sure that it has longevity.
Sure. Well, you kind of anticipated one of my questions, but I'm going to sort of ask it anyway. Similarly to the East Village, you know, we and others have been advocating to get a South of Union Square Historic District. We've managed to, with a lot of pressure, get a few buildings landmarked. About a year or so ago, we got one additional building landmark, Seventy-Fifth Avenue, which is in what's now the Third Council District, but it, what will be the Second Council District, the district you're running for. But we certainly have not gotten the, the district, the historic district that we've been seeking and that we think the area really needs and deserves. So how would you, as a city council member, work, since you're on the record saying that you support the Union Square, the proposed Union Square Historic District? How would you, which, by the way, I should mention that Councilmember Carlina Rivera has not said that she supports the proposed South of Union Square Historic District. But how would you, as a city council member, work to try to get the city to do that, since they have been resisting it and they haven't done it so far? What would you, in your city council role, do to try to get them there, to try to help with that effort?
Well... Okay, so I'm going to come from my activist background, and I automatically think, like, it's not just me going to the mayor to say, I want to make this happen, or, or me going to the landmarks commissioner and saying, I want to make, and the landmarks board to say, I want to make this happen. Okay, what are the steps we need to do? But I think it's also a matter of the property owners and the small businesses. National change as well, and also the National change as well, and also the residents. Who live in that neighborhood and and probably working with you. And in the block associations rallying together to show like. It's not just me, the council member wanting. South of Union Square to. To be a historic district, it's the people. Who live and work. In that area who want historic district. I mean, I know, like, when you live in a historic district, like you take pride. In your neighborhood and. And it encourages to also learn more about the buildings that you walk past. And I mean, there are lots of walking tours that. Around, like in different neighborhoods around. But that's just one more way that I would encourage, like. I would like, I think to make it successful to actually make. To designate South of Union Square a historic district, it's. It's with the. The residents and the small and the property owners. Support and advocacy.
Got it. So speaking of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, one of the things that certainly we've struggled with is that. You know, once an area is landmarked, it it. It then falls under the jurisdiction of the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission to regulate it, to make sure that the. History of the area is preserved, to to review and approve changes to buildings and of course, changes. Inevitable and allowable even in a historic district, but it's of course supposed to kind of maintain that historic character. We and certainly others have been frustrated in many cases by the city's landmarks preservation commission, sometimes seemingly very lax oversight. Of historic districts and landmarked buildings increasingly so lately, including in some places. Allowing buildings to be demolished, either that they've voted to approve their demolition, so by intention. Or where a owner did some work and said, you know, oops, this building is now. Unstable fatally flawed and it's got to be brought down. What would you, as a city council member, do to try to get the landmarks preservation? To be more stringent, and by the way, I just want to sort of make a side note, they're very lax when it comes to certain kinds of. Owners typically developers, well connected developers, often for the little guy, they're sometimes shockingly strict. But so we're not seeking to get them to be stricter for folks who don't need stricter regulation, but in those cases where they have been too lax, we are trying to get them to be. A little stricter. And what would you, as a city council member, do to try to change that?
Well. I have to piggyback on what you just said about being the landmarks commission being lax with developers because. You, I automatically, as you're asking this question, I automatically think of what's happened with. Two fifty Water Street. And how save South Street Seaport discovered in their foil. And discovery process that the landmarks commission was in collusion with Howard Hughes Corporation. To build a. A twenty two, I believe it's twenty two story. Building out of, whereas like in that historic district, the tallest building is four stories. And so what you're describing like it's. Happens in Lower Manhattan, it's. May not maybe in Council District One, but. It's still a historic district and it's very, it's probably like a mile away from here, from my house. And. But I think in all series seriousness, it's important to. Draw attention to that because we need transparency and accountability, not just from me as an elected official, but also from our city agencies. So I think part of. Having them honor. Buildings or districts to become historic. Um, to be landmarked. We have to hold them accountable. We have to have the transparency that. That everybody is aware that this is happening, that this is happening. And through the media. Through. On the community boards. It can be established networks as well, but. I think through. I think the like, I know it sounds so simple. But as we see with what's happened to two fifty Water Street, it's not. It's not simple at all.
Sure, I actually see a question in the Q and A that anticipates one of the questions I was going to ask, so. I was gonna ask it soon anyway, but I'm gonna ask it now. The Second Council District, which includes. NoHo and the area around Washington Square, that really is the center of New York University. Which has, of course, had a huge impact on the neighborhood in terms of its expansion plans. And it's actually seeking to have an even bigger impact. Because they're actually suing to get one of the very few decent parts. Of the Soho NoHo rezoning that we and others fought to get in there, which is a prohibition on private university expansion. In the rezoning area undone. So I guess, so what I'm going to ask you is, in general, what are your thoughts about? The impact of NYU and its sort of ever growing. Presence in the neighborhood and what can and would you, as a city council member, do in relation to that?
Well, I am one hundred percent against NYU expansion. And I do believe that you need a strong city council member to adhere to that statement. It's not something you take lightly. I I can actually share. I I helped found the Friends of Tompkins Square Park and I learned that. Carolina actually had reached out to NYU to help take care, to help take care of Tompkins Square Park. Saying that it was, there were lots of students. In East Village and Alphabet City, and so they needed to help take care of the park. And for me, it was more impetus to be like, no way. So he, this is. This is a historic park that belongs to the residents of this community. We do not need NYU involved. And so I'm sharing that as an example of me working as a private citizen to oppose NYU expansion. And. And I think as Greenwich Village residents know, like, how how much. Wash, um, NYU is involved in Washington Square Park thing. I I hope they can empathize our fight to keep NYU out of Tompkins Square Park. Um, but. And all, but going back to your question. NYU has become, is like very, is a corporation now, is just expanding and expanding. And. And you have, and and I think this is true for lots of universities. I mean, there are, I mean, we have Cooper. Cooper Union, we have the New School, we have Parsons. And Greenwich Village and in NoHo. So it's not just, you have to be mind. NYU is biggest out of them all, but we have. But they need to check their. Their growth and how it affects. Effects our neighborhoods because we are, like, there are residents who have lived here. I mean, many residents. Graduated from NYU years ago, when it was a much smaller university, or probably possibly when it was a college. But I think we need, but I do think we have to, we need checks and balances. And one of those checks is to check its growth.
Two quick NYU follow up questions. One is, I don't know if you're aware of the sort of struggle over the supermarket, the Morton Williams on Bleecker Street. I'm wondering if you have a position on that. And then the second question is, we, along with the. Coalition for Fairness in NoHo and SoHo and Councilmember Christopher Marte are seeking to intervene in the NYU lawsuit case so that we can fight it. Because I personally, I don't a hundred percent trust the city to fight it as well as they should. And if you were elected council member, would you? If it was still going on at that time, would you support that, that our effort to intervene in that lawsuit?
So I'll. I'll answer the first question. Yes, I I have publicly come out in support to save Morton Williams supermarket. I I used to live in that area when that was the only grocery store that you could go to. And so I know firsthand, or I should say, I remember firsthand. How important it is. It is an expensive grocery store, I will say, I will admit. But it does, it does serve a need for the area that you, like, there is a need for a grocery store. In that area, in that part of the neighborhood. And but I also am aware that the city has. Said that it's going, that it has, I forget the right word, but. Basically, it said like it's going, it wants to build a school on that spot. And and I, and what was written in the press is that. The city was planning to build a school for children with special needs, which I completely support. One idea I had was. In lieu of. Putting the. Um, building a brand new school, what if instead NYU? Gave the money to like buy a. Catholic school that has been decommissioned. Because right now, in like in Catholic schools, they're. Basically, they're closing about ten New York City Catholic schools a year for the past few years. So we do have schools that are actually exist, like empty schools that are empty. So then, so I would like to look at that situation in creative terms of like of adaptive reuse. And. And then, so secondly, in regard to your question, if I would, if if I'm elected, if I would join the lawsuit. To against NYU, I miss, one hundred percent, I would say yes.
Great, thank you very much. So. I I want to shift a little bit. Part of the new Second Council District is going to include Greenwich Village between Fifth and Sixth Apennies. There's a couple of issues we've been working on there that I wanted to ask you a little bit about. One is, we've been trying to get Fifty West Thirteenth Street Landmarks, which was the longtime home of the Thirteenth Street Repertory Theater. Also referred to as the Jacob Day House because the nineteenth century African American business leader, who was also a voting rights crusader and abolitionist. Lived and had his business there for many decades in the nineteenth century. We have been pushing the city to landmark it, and in spite of their claiming that they have what they call an equity framework where they're. Look, they're specifically looking to landmark sites that represent diverse and underrepresented histories, such as African American history, Latino history. Asian American history, et cetera. They've been so far unwilling to move on that. Would you support landmark designation of a site like that? And what would you do if so, to help try to get it landmarked?
I would one hundred percent support the landmark designation of that building based on its history. And in addition to writing a. A letter requesting for it to be a landmark, I think it would be important to actually go. Go further than that and to. Get like to create programming to educate people. Or to like programming that would educate people about. The history of the building and and the people that were. Were they like, and how they impacted history because. It is something that like if if the people didn't exist and worked there. The work that they did. If they hadn't done it, it would have altered our current course of history. And so I think creating a edu, like an education program to share this information. Is necessary to increase, an additional way to increase getting it landmarked. So the landmark commission can see first, of course, they'll be invited. But the public will be invited too, but it's important to make them aware. Like that we're making efforts to make people aware of. This history.
Got it. Great. Well, another issue in that area between Fifth and Sixth Avenue, we've been working on. Involves ten Fifth Avenue and fourteen sixteen Fifth Avenue. That is on between Eighth and Ninth Streets. Fourteen Fifth Avenue was a building in the Greenwich Village Historic District, which over our objections and the objections of. Literally thousands of New Yorkers, the city allowed it to be demolished. Once it was demolished, the high rise tower that is going up there, the pile driving work from that. Effort was. Resulted in damage to a neighboring landmark building, number ten Fifth Avenue. Which had many people living in it, including in rent regulated apartments, all of whom had to be evacuated and. Three months later, I believe it is now, they're still not back in their homes and whether or not that's going to be. That building is going to be fixable remains to be seen. So a question that I have for you is, what are your thoughts about? A case like that where the city actually not only allows a historic landmark building to be demolished, but then the replacement building. That they allow to be built actually ends up damaging another landmark building. And what would you do about situations like that? If you were a city council member?
Well, unfortunately, I know of another site and this. Sort in a similar, sort of in a similar situation at the corner of Fourteenth and C. There was an auto parts store that was demolished to make way for, I believe, a fifteen story building. And it caused structural damage to the building next door to the point that the, and it was a. Rental built rental res, residential building that was rental apartments. The landlord sued. To stop construction. And. So now there's going to be a twenty two story building put in that place, but then last week. There was, it was also the, the lot was designated a brown field. And but. What connects these two situations for me is that a high rise. Builds, building is being built and or as it's, the site is being prepared. It's causing structural damage to the historic buildings next to it. And I think this is indicative of. An issue if we can, if if high rise buildings are allowed to be built. Unchecked, we will see more of these situations. And so that's part, that's actually that influence, that's. Informs my advocacy. To oppose high rise buildings. In historic districts.
Good, thank you. I want to ask you about small businesses, which I know you talked about in your opening statement, certainly helping to. As much as possible to preserve and promote individual independent small businesses in our neighborhood is a priority for us. It's obviously been a tough time for a lot of small businesses. Some are thriving, but we've seen a lot of them disappear over the last few years. You know, interestingly, a lot of them ended up being more resilient than the chain stores when COVID hit, which was actually nice to see. But that said, they do face a lot of challenges. What do you see as some of the particular challenges that small businesses in our neighborhoods face? And what would you do? To help promote a good environment for small businesses?
So I think. Number one is addressing the lease renewal. And. Actually, I have come out in support of the Small Business Jobs Survival Act. And and for two years, so it's not like I'm. Coming out in support of it tonight. It's something that I have. I firmly believe that we need this legislation. I have talked to hundreds of merchants over the past. This year alone. And they, it's not so much that like the rents are high, they are high. But. There, it's the lease renewal. That is like, because right now, small businesses don't have any rights. When they go into renew their lease, it's up to. The landlord to decide whether they want them there. The one of my favorite, like. One of. The place I I get jewelry repaired. She lost her lease because the landlord decided to put a sushi shop in it. And she was able to get another storefront nearby, but it was. But the problem is, is like you need. You need to enable small businesses to get long-term leases. So they can grow in which like to get a loan. Like because based on the stability of being in their location. So I can talk about other issues of how to help small businesses, but I think the number. From my perspective of talking to merchants, it's is that we need to help them. Fairly negotiate their lease, so they're. On equal terms with the landlord and that it's a win-win for both sides, so they both can earn a profit.
Great. By the way, folks, I'm seeing wonderful questions coming in in the Q and A. We're definitely going to try to get to all of them, so. Thank you and and keep them coming. Let's see, here's a question for you. So would you abide by the tradition of what's called member deference in the city council? If you do, you may have to vote for land use items in other districts that you disagree with. But if you don't, the rest of the council may not support you on land use items in your district. And you manned a powerless to stop bad zoning approvals in your, in the neighborhoods you represent. How would you decide or balance between the two options?
Oh, this is, so under the Blasi administration and his last year in office, we. I saw firsthand, and I know you did too. So Margaret Chen, who is a former council member of District One, she. She decided to vote yes for the governor's island rezoning. So almost everyone voted yes with her. Ben Kalos, on the other hand, decided to vote against the blood bank. New building being built in the middle of a. A block. And but the blood bank had. Courted all the city council members to vote yes. So all the vote, so all the city council members put aside member deference and voted yes for the blood bank. But then you have the. So so you have the Soho NoHo rezoning that Margaret Chen and Carolina Rivera both negotiated and approved. And that led the majority of. City council members to vote yes with them. I have a track record of. Standing with residents to listen to them. I've met. Groups of neighbors fighting rezonings all across the city. And so I'm gonna stand. I will, I may, it will. It may come across that I go against member deference. But at the end, and it may look like I am going for member deference, but my votes on land use issues. Will always be based. On. The grassroots groups. Of neighbors and residents and what they want for their community. And I will look and I will in, and I do want to add this because I think this is really important. Part of that decision-making for myself will come from looking at the community board's resolutions. Because I've seen firsthand, community boards. Voting against. Was ever sentencing, they're voting for resolutions that would go against a rezoning that council member disregards. So for me, the whatever the, the, it's not just the grassroots group. But it's also that in in conjunction with the community board's resolution.
Okay, a couple more questions before we give you a chance to make a closing statement, and then we're going to open, we're going to try to hit some of the Q and As. The New York INR Infirmary on Thirteenth Street and Second Avenue. We've been working with a pretty broad coalition of staff members there, doctors, patients. All of whom are fighting a plan that would result in not only the services that are offered at that building being. Dispersed and arguably no longer really being offered or being offered in as effective a way as they are now. And in all likelihood, that very historic building being demolished, where Helen Keller spoke at the ribbon cutting and where. You know, for over a hundred and fifty years, this very groundbreaking services for people with disabilities have been offered. Would you support the effort to landmark the the building? And what is your position in relation to the reorganization plan that is being put forward in terms of the hospital?
I one hundred percent support landmarking the building. It's a gorgeous building. I pass it several times a week. I know it's under scaffolding right now, but. You cannot build a building like that today. It's just, it's not gonna hap- it's just not gonna happen. Secondly, in regard, I don't know, I will admit, I don't know enough to comment. About the hospital's restructuring plan to give an answer. Sorry. Funny enough, an ambulance is going by. But I would. I will say that I think it's in. The services that the hospital currently provides. Are are needed. I. Thankfully, my family hasn't had issue, issues in that realm, so I haven't researched. What if there's comparable services like that provided in Lower Manhattan? But I would say. I would honestly, I would trust what the doc, like the doctors and the hospital staff. And the nurses are saying, because they like, they know probably more than anyone, how many. Where else similar services are provided in the city?
Very, two quick questions. One is, do you support the effort to landmark as well as save Theater Eighty?
Yes.
Okay, and here's my final question. By the way, there's a question in the chat. Is this going to be recorded and shared? Yes, absolutely. So everybody who's watching, if you want to share this after, or you want to go back and, you know, look at this, you will be able to. How would you distinguish yourself from your opponent in this race, Councilmember Rivera? I know you spoke to this somewhat at the beginning, but what would you say are, you know, kind of some of the main contrasts or differences between the two of you?
The easiest is. Is that. Carolina is. She does, she creates and sponsors legislation that benefits multimillionaire developers and special interest groups. I got, I got involved in politics. Because I initially wanted to save East River Park. I attended. U L R P, um, public hearings and testified against the plan. I. I advocated for the community-led flood prevention plan that was less destructive, that would have saved. A lot more trees and a lot, and we, in the park. Sorry, um, but I've. So with that in mind, that's led me to collaborate every, it's. Before, before getting involved in East River Park, I would have considered myself an environmental. I would have said I'm an environmental and bicycle activist. But since getting involved in East River, to getting involved in East River Park, I've become more of a land use activist. And that has led me to get to meet. People who live in neighborhoods all around the city. And and develop relationships with them, and I'll probably be reiterating this in my closing remarks, but. I think the different, the the major difference between the two of us is who we want to serve. And I want to serve the residents. Who live here. In lower, in Council District Two, but also like the legislation that I would work on. And in support affect all New Yorkers. So it's like, I mean, I know this sounds simple, but it's just like we have to put people before profits. And. So that's important to me.
Got it. Thank you. So all right, I'm gonna give you a minute to do a closing statement, and then we're gonna hit some of the public questions.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, we need a city council member who will stand with the residents. Of the Lower East Side, East Village, NoHo, Union Square, Greenwich Village, Gramercy, and Kipps Bay. Neighborhoods all within Council District Two. Over the past six years, Carolina Rivera has failed to serve Lower Manhattan by negotiating and approving. The ill-conceived Soho NoHo rezoning, unsavory roadway dining shacks. And the possibly non-compliant. Open Streets Program. And thus causing residents to file lawsuits to repeal her legislation and land use plans. I am committed to serve the residents of these neighborhoods if elected. I am the only hope to end the reign of a weak elected official who sides with. The mayor, millionaire developers, and special interest groups to feed her ambition. So vote for me, Ally Ryan, on June twenty-seventh. Or or during early voting, June twelfth through June twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So as I mentioned, we've got some great questions in here and. Also, just a couple of things that people wanted to say and make sure you're aware of. One was that. According to one of the attendees, NYU is also threatening a supermarket in a building that it owns on Second Avenue between Sixth and Seventh Streets, so. Wanted you to sort of be aware of that. One question that we got, and I'll ask you to try to keep these as as quick as you can, so we can hit a bunch, is will you be accepting donations from real estate interests?
No.
Okay, that seems to be a quick, simple answer. Another question I received is what? What endorsements have you received or that you would like to tout or mention?
Well. I would say Catherine Freed, who is my mentor, she has endorsed me. She's a former councilman for District One, which. Used to be part of East Village, NoHo, and Greenwich Village. I did not receive any endorsements from the Democratic Clubs. Several, a couple of the Democratic Clubs wanted to see how I would, want me to show what I can do. And. But otherwise, I haven't really sought out endorsements. Because I'm just, you know, there's a lot going on, so it's more important to me to. Be abreast of what's going on, the issues and over. In March, early part of April, my team and I collected over twenty-three hundred petition signatures. To secure my name on the ballot.
Got it.
Um, so I'm more of a hands-on person when it came to petitioning and also attending rallies to.
Got it. Okay, thanks. One question was, tell us what sort of paid jobs you have held?
Certainly, I've worked as a documentary film producer. And I've worked on documentaries about critical mass. I worked with Reverend Billy and the Stop Shopping Choir to produce a web series called Earthaluya. That was incidentally filmed at Theater Eighty. And I've also worked as an assistant manager. For a couple of different. Fine dining restaurants. I also worked as an artist for a really long time and writing articles. And also odd jobs.
Okay, uh, one person uh, mentioned, and I'm sure they're not the only person for whom this is true, that they live in the above Fourteenth Street portion of the district. And this person said that that part of the district gets kind of neglected, they feel. And so they wanted to ask you if, I guess, if you basically had anything to say about making sure that that part of the district is. Given the attention it's due and served by its city council member.
Oh, yes, I'm, thank you for that, for that question. My children actually go to school in Gramercy and Kipps Bay, so I'm up there twice a day, five days a week. And I have supporters in Kipps Bay that are putting together a meet and greet on May twenty-second. I'm not trying to. But I am actively trying to get. Learn more about the issues that are up there. I know that I I see firsthand the. That with bicy- I'm an avid bicyclist as well, so I'm. I'm going on First Avenue and Second Avenue bike lanes, and so I'm. I know firsthand how difficult it is to, how scary it can be navigating the bike lanes with. E-bikes, e-scooters, mopeds, motorcycles, even bicyclists not obeying the laws of traffic. And. But the other part is what I see up there, that's not talked about at all, in my opinion. Is the, there is overdevelopment. There are, like, I know that there are, I've seen just over the past year. Luxury high-rises being built such as at the, at the corner of Twenty-third and Third Avenue. And. So I, so I do question that, and I also am aware that Mark Levine's, in Mark Levine's report, he actually. Notes that Second Avenue in Kipps Bay on the left-hand, or sorry, on the west side. Could be rezoned for development. So that is something I'm actually actively trying to learn as much as I can about.
Good, thanks. Another question was, if you, if you don't win this election, would you consider joining Community Board Three?
Yes, I actually applied to Community Board Three last year. And I was not accepted. I don't, and and I. Since Councilmember Rivera, since I ran against her in twenty-twenty-one, I don't think she'll want me to be on the board, so if I. Eventually want to get on Commander, Community Board Three, it will probably be under a different council member.
Got it, okay. By the way, I'll mention I dropped in the chat again, the link if you want to support Village Preservation. And at the top of the chat is the link to our upcoming program calendar. And at the top of the chat is the link to our upcoming program calendar, so don't forget about that. Let's see, somebody mentioned in the chat that they believe that the school on the supermarket site is no longer for special needs children. That that's their comment. I I'm, I don't know that for sure. Let's see, and then we had another question, which was, why do you think Councilmember Rivera did not participate in this debate and did not participate two years ago as well?
Well, two years ago, I wrote an op-ed for the Village Sun because she declined another debate with me. And basically, I called her out on avoiding accountability and being accountable for her track record. You, she doesn't like, she'll vote for these issues, but as we saw when she ran for Congress last year, she repeatedly said she's a fighter. And even for me, at least, it became code for like she's fighting the community or like fighting against the community. So in the case of not to participate here, she doesn't she doesn't want to face her track record. She doesn't want anyone like she doesn't want to admit that that residents are crowdsourcing to file lawsuits against her legislation and her land use, her land use plans. Because that's, I mean, that's the truth. I mean, it's like I off the top of my head, I can think of like the Soho NoHo rezoning, Elizabeth Street Garden. There are three lawsuits to save about East River Park. That you also have two lawsuits to in the restaurant sheds. You have another, a new lawsuit that's in federal court right now that's claiming that Open Streets is non-ADA compliant as well as the Governor's Island rezoning.
Great. Well, it's seven fifteen, which is the time when we said we would wrap, so we're gonna wrap that here. Ally, I want to thank you so much for participating. I want to thank all of the attendees. Again, look at our events page, upcoming things, District One Forum, Village Awards and our annual meeting. We, this has been recorded, we will be sharing this with everybody. Please share it with your friends and neighbors. Don't forget that the primary election is on June twenty-seventh. And there will be early voting the week before up until June twenty-fifth. And then, of course, the general will be in November. And we will continue to try to inform the public about the process of the the election cycle and how you can get involved. So thank you, everybody, so much for your participation. Thank you, Ally, and we're looking forward to speaking to everybody more about this and other topics soon. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.